I'm about to look at. We have to briefly take that.
What I do.
Add Terry to the.
Okay.
Beginning.
All right.
I promise not to say anything.
Oh, he spoke too soon.
Where to find the book?
Yeah.
I think it's here in here.
Call me.
Hey.
You can find me. R T. Cyprar. You. I said, yes, I am B O L D. B O L D. Rainbow, rainbow, thank you. Good Irish name, right?
Yes.
It's four, okay. Well, welcome, everybody. To our September eighth. Port of Alan regular meeting, if you would stand with me and join me in the flight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much and welcome. Commissioner Sheridan hasn't excused the absence, he's in a class, as a matter of fact, he's in a class for being a chaplain for the sheriff, so.
Please train.
Train, yeah. Um, we have public comment right now, um, and then we'll go to into the approval of the agenda, so you two can wait till after the public comment and then we'll put you in the agenda and you'll be right off the top. Does that sound good? We were on it, Bonnie, not yet. Uh, but other co- public comment, uh, public comment will be, go ahead and, uh, we'll take the people who are in the audience and if we can have it three minutes, that would be great, so if you would come to the podium, identify who you are and then, uh, speak your piece. You can, if you want.
That means you.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna put them, we're gonna add them to the agenda.
Never mind.
Okay. Anybody here in the audience want to speak? No? Okay, then Zoom. Um, I see Joe, yes?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, commissioners. Just, uh, wanted to address, um, government accountability and, um, the purpose for being in government is to make your community a better place to, um, bring transparency, um, to the process, to involve, uh, the community with, with, um, input and as far as what you're doing and why you're doing it. And, uh, it seems the Port of Allen has lost their way in that area. Um, I was reviewing the public record uh, from quite some time ago and looking back as far as two thousand and one, I noticed that there was actually plans for a, a wa- uh, business park, um, earnest money had been put down and appraisal had been ordered for a piece of property and, um, here we are twenty-four years later and we have no business park. And the Port of Allen is tasked with providing economic, uh, support and economic growth and development is its primary function of the Port District. It's specified on the port's website, it's, it's noted, um, that's the duty of ports in Washington State. So, the port really needs to get back to its core mission and that's providing economic growth and development in the Port District, um. In addition to that, um, com- uh, Director Bonnie Knight, two thousand and twelve, um, upon developing, um, the poor water system and working with, uh, Commissioner Scott on that, um, specified that there was two hundred connections available and that the system had capacity to serve a thousand connections. And here we are, uh, thirteen years later and it's my understanding that today the port has only a hundred and forty-seven connections and only thirty-eight of those connections are available. Uh, so this doesn't seem like the port is really taking their charger very seriously, things are not moving at the speed that they should, um, a business, if private business moved at that speed, they'd be out of business. Um, so these are things the port needs to take seriously, this is what the, the community wants, they want growth, uh, families in Washington State need housing, um, businesses need, uh, people need jobs, businesses need to, to, uh, have opportunities to expand in Allen. Belt. And so, uh, these are things that I'm bringing to the port's attention that have not been taken care of, that need to be taken care of, um. The water system should cup, serve every vacant piece of land in Allen. And there's no excuses and there's no reason why that has not happened. And five years ago Larry Coppola addressed the commission and let them know that the, that the port only had a hundred and thirty-two water connections and they were gonna run out, he'd issued ninety of them. And five years later, here we are in the same exact spot. So, you need some accountability.
Thank you. Um, I see next, uh, Mr. Ben Busker.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, uh, uh, two years ago you folks had a special meeting out of county at the Kitsap Building Association in Bremerton. And the purpose of that meeting was to discuss the upcoming comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements. During the meeting, Commissioner Scott stated she always believed the port should own and operate a commercial or a light industrial park. Later in the meeting, Sweetwater and the Salmon Center were discussed. Mr. Coppola stated that the cost of doing the project had tripled in the time that the port had been working with the Salmon Center pursuing funding for the park. While it qualified for funding, it was ranked so low that it was not funded. Mr. Coppola felt if the project were to be dropped, it wouldn't be the worst thing. He suggested the Salmon Center work with someone else and the port not be the lead anymore. A month later, he passed away. Here we are, two years later. I obtained a copy of the Hazard Tree Removal Permit filed with the county last month. It was signed by Mr. Merrill with Ms. Harlow as an authorized agent. The two of them have been going to several community groups, giving presentations, promoting the property. The two arborist reports that were commissioned and paid for by the port are outdated. They need to be updated and ground-truthed. I recently noticed a four to five-foot diameter dead tree on the property. There's also a seasonal stream that I've told you folks about several times. There is Devil's Club uphill from the property on the school district property and that is an indicator species for wetlands. The permit fails to address the adjacent wetlands as well as the supposed archaeological site on the port property, which was listed in two thousand and twelve by the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group with no one other than perhaps one of the former property owners and themselves knowing about it. And it's now referenced in the two thousand and twenty-two Planned Action E I S. That's the site that I asked you folks as landowners to comment on, but you failed to. At your recent eight-twenty-eight special meeting, there was discussion about an application for Mason County oh-nine funds to pay for a cultural resource assessment, a wetland delineation and a properties rezone. Why does the port want to rezone property from R ten to, to mixed use? Rezones are timely and expensive process with no guarantees. Only part of the port's property and all the Salmon Center property is zoned R ten. It should be two separate rezones as there are two different property owners. And why should county oh-nine monies be used to pay for a county permit? It seems like a question for the county auditor, Mr. Dunkel. In two thousand and four, during the subarea planning process, both the Port of Allen Executive Director, Commissioner Scott, as well as the Salmon Center representative and the school district representative and Chairperson Brian Peterson and several others advocated for that multifamily zoning for that particular spot. You have to ask yourself why and you need to dispose of the property, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody, uh, Phil, do you have anything? No? Okay. Moving on, we are at the approval of the agenda and I would like to add two items. Uh, one is Bonnie Knight, uh, she's been working with the Sergeant Oyster House of which has been, um, a key project for the Port of Allen. So she'll give a report first and then I forgot your name. Terry. Reinbold? Okay, and you are with the sweet, it's a, in regard to.
Speaking for the, uh.
The sweet one.
Okay. I represent the Quanis Club of North Mason.
Okay, and you represent the Quanis Club, in case they can't hear that.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, let's have those two items added. And, and Bonnie would like to start right off the top, so let's go ahead and do that. Uh, do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I read that.
Okay, I'll second it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we can add those two items and we'll start off the top, Bonnie? You would, please?
Thank you so much. Sorry, I'm not, I'm just weak, um. It's been a long time since we started this project, in fact, in two thousand and eleven, the project was started, a lot of people don't realize that thing's been, hasn't been that long. It started because Bill Dewey from Taylor Shellfish, Michael Sullivan from the Historic Society and the port. I was with them, we decided that was a historic building that needed to be restored. Fast forward, the port commissioners approved the project, Randy worked very closely with it and so did Judy all the way along the line. In the early years, there was a lot of public input, we did a feasibility as far as where to put it. It was gonna be, it was gonna remain on-site out there and then Fish and Wildlife kind of screwed that up, took all the land on any sites, we couldn't do that. Took a lot to get it resited and we went through a whole process on where we could recite it. And we tried up the bay and down the bay and it ended up that out here is the best place for it. And with all of the support would also be there. Because I've heard some questions about could it be moved, but at this stage of the game, the permits and everything are already done. We had a commission or we had a board put together, Judy served on it, she's been on it, um. And we've been working a lot on the design and all the things that have had to happen, it's a long, slow process, we've gotten grant money. The port has gotten grant money and the North the Historic Society is actually responsible for the building and the historic preservation, the port is responsible for getting it out there. Because that's their name. We've worked very well moving forward, the building itself. We now have finished the outside, of course, it's kind of funny because some strange things are done, it's gonna be painted. And that should be in the very, not very near, not very far future at all. Uh, there was some question about the design. When Mike Ross drew a conceptual drawing, he put sidewalks on the sides and there was a good reason for that at the time. But the reasons changed. And our committee, Dan was here, I talked to everybody with him today. And we had decided a long, long time ago that we didn't want to change the look of the building. It would change the historic look of it. There was a question about the sliding door, which is a really, we think, but that's the committee said that's the way it should be. So we're working, that's, we're working through that. Uh, the electrical was in, we've had the inspection on that and I talked with the county permit people. And um, they're gonna be out to inspect the everything, you know, everything, you know, the, all of the ins and outs and the little holes and all that stuff. And as soon as that's done, we can, the insulation is already sitting out there, so it's been paid for. So we are making really good progress, even though it may not look like it from the outside. Um, we've got a very good board we're working with. And as soon as the inspections are done, we can put in the insulation and then we're ready to go with it, with the drywall and we do have the money to do it. So, it's coming along, it's coming along, within just six months, all of the actual building should be together, that part should be finished. We had a really good thing happen last week, Tim, well, way back when Olympia Oyster lived, they had their building out on open, open base, that right is?
Yeah, there, there is one, yeah.
Yeah, anyway, Olympia Oyster's been around since nineteen fifty-one, just like Sergeant. Anyway, when they decided to change their building, they hadn't put so much money into historic preservation. And part of that, since they were not gonna rebuild their building, the North the Historic Society got forty thousand dollars towards our project, which has been extremely helpful, it's helped us to finish all this stuff. Tim called me the other day, Tim McMillan called. And all of their a lot of their museum stuff, we went down and we picked it up and he's given us a lot of other things, uh, things like an oyster fork, which we didn't have. And a lot of other small things for the museum, so we're really excited and he also gave us boxes of recipes that we can sell for a dollar a piece and there's like thousands of, so we're really excited about that. Uh, it's going very well. And we're hoping that by late this fall, even though we can't move the building, we can start doing some finishing stuff on it and I talked to the county today about the permits and I said, is that possible? Since the shoreline's not gonna be ready for at least a year, could we? Is there any chance that we can make it ready for the public before then? And he said that is a possibility. We'll just have to wait and see. But we are moving forward, it's going really, really well and if he has any questions. I mean, I had to go back because people don't realize all the decisions that were made along the way by the committees and by the port and by the county. It's too late to change any of the basic steps now. But, we're excited.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming back and getting back in the saddle, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm my mind's bad.
Yeah.
Bonnie has something for the minds.
Yes, please.
Okay, I don't think hardly any of you folks know, I'm Terry Reinbold. Uh, my wife Donna and I live in Belfair. And I am the current president of the Quanis Club of North Mason. And the official name of this project that, that I want to discuss, which we're partly been talking about, the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group and the Port of Allen's Sweetwater Creek Water Wheel Park Project. Wow, they've gotten a longer name on that.
It's a mouthful.
It is a mouthful. Um, I think it is a wonderful project, so does the Quanis Club. Uh, for those that don't know, probably everybody does, but real quick recap, recap. Uh, the new park, uh, park, the trail, the restored stream, the tremendous, will be tremendous benefit to people of Belfair and of all Mason County. Uh, settings such as the one proposed as project play an important role in the quality of life, healthy lifestyles and need for increased recreational opportunities in both Allen and Belfair. We are confident that through the strong partnership between each C S G and the port, these two entities will deliver on this project for the benefit of the community. As you know, the park will include repaired trails and bridges in addition to the water wheel, which I'm looking forward to having fixed up, uh, which will allow the public to finally enjoy this space that is conveniently located near other transit lines and local trails such as the Mary Thursday Center, the Union River, S Q R walking trails and others. We believe this project will greatly enhance the community and create a wonderful addition for new visitors. The project will also create essential environmental learning opportunities for all ADA accessible fishing and recreational opportunity, opportunities as well as space for our community together. Um, my wife and I, uh, were working on this and, uh, we honestly can't think of a more appropriate and environmentally responsible way to enhance this property. Uh, we hope that you will please give this project your full report, your full support. And I have a copy of this letter that I will leave with you, sir.
Yes, please.
Yes, okay, thank you. Um, yeah, it's just, I've got a copy of the map here, it's too small for you all to see, I know. But looking at the details, this looks wonderful. And I know there's been some issues and some time delays and stuff, but hopefully we can work on those and get this thing moving, we need to get it done. And we'll keep working on it too, anyway, that's all, thank you. Any, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, we're at the consent agenda items, do I hear a motion to accept the agenda items?
I'll make the motion that we accept the, uh, sense agenda.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Commissioner reports.
I have a citizen request to pull one of the items off the consent agenda.
Okay, which one is that?
Uh, the special meeting minutes of the twenty-eighth, could you uh, put that on the regular agenda?
What is your purpose?
Uh, separate discussion and vote?
For the August twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Already occurred somewhere. Pardon? It already occurred, I would be told, one meeting, twelve one. All we're doing is approving the minutes.
Uh, yes, I, I have a correction I'd like you to consider and a discussion, so you change those.
Well, you can go ahead and suggest it, uh, what is your suggestion?
You, you didn't follow the process and ask if there was anybody that wanted to, to, uh, prove it and I tried to log on there. Um.
Apologize for that.
You have it in front of you. Have you read, have you read both those minutes?
When I have it in front of us.
So if you turn to page two of the August twenty-eighth minutes, right above the, uh, letter about Sweetwater, there's comments attributed to me. Do you see those?
Yes. About the oh-nine funds?
Yes, please, please, uh. All right.
This is, this is, we lost you.
Yes, are you still there?
Yeah.
The comments on page two of the August twenty-eighth meeting were the comments that I made at the August eleventh meeting and they need to be stricken from the twenty-eighth meeting. Somebody cut and pasted the exact same comments and put them on the twenty-eighth meeting. If you want to refer to the August eleventh, the exact same ones are there.
Interesting.
Uh, looking at the August eleven comments. See here.
Because I, I remember him talking about the.
It was being the same.
I, I talked about it at August eleventh, I did not talk about it at August twenty-eighth.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
That was a mistake of mine.
All right. Duly noted then. Thank you, Mr. Ben.
So they have been stricken?
Yes, we will, we'll make that adjustment.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will correct that.
The August eleventh.
Uh, yeah, so.
Yeah, they're correct.
From the August twenty-eighth strike, what was there and put it in the August eleventh, so we need, uh, an approval for that or that it will be corrected?
I'll make the motion that we do the, make the, make the appropriate corrections so it accurately reflects what was said and what Dave was all said.
Yeah, the correction will be made and then it will be available in the next regular meeting.
Okay.
And then at that point, when you approve that, it'll be posted for this meeting.
Okay, excellent, so I'll second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. So onward we go. Mike, do you have a report?
Um. See here. I have not much of one, I just attended the last meeting. Our special meeting on the twenty-eighth. And, uh, this meeting, it's about it.
Okay.
We didn't make it, the D C meetings.
Yeah, so you did not this time?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, I attended the regular port meeting, um, attended the Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization meeting August fifteenth. Uh, listened in on the R C O meeting with the nineteenth with, um, you know, the extension of uh, the complacency. Uh, August twenty-seventh, I attended the Oyster House meeting with Bonnie and forgot his last name, but Kim Gant is from Department of Archaeological and Historical Preservation, so we went over the Oyster House.
Andy Lee.
Andy, oh yeah, okay. And then also the port special meeting. And then, um, picked up signs and stuff for, from Wash Dot. Uh, Washington State Department of Transportation. Okay. Old business. Um, Travis, would you like to?
We.
Leave it's in there?
Executive Director's report? Do you have any questions on that before we go to old business?
Oh, sure, because that kind of follows through, I guess that's, but yes.
I've got a chance to read it, um, and touch on any details that I don't have any questions on. So on the, on the web.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, I have any questions.
Instant. Director's reporting, right?
Yes, it's on the website, isn't it?
Yeah.
Director's report.
Nothing.
No.
Okay, you can move on to old business. Um, I did have a, uh, a bit there for the water, uh, system development portion, um, just wanted to update uh, publicly commission on, we're still waiting from, uh, D O H on, uh, getting that approval. They've got everything they need for that second round of comments that they needed those, uh, additional information on, so we will be reaching out to them here this week and finding out if the holdup is, we're at week three right now, after it's been resubmitted. It took them nearly ninety days the first time around, but, uh, second times around, there's, there's very little for them to actually look at, so it shouldn't be too much longer. As soon as that comes back as approved, then the, um, the bid packet you've already approved goes straight out to bid and we'll give them, we'll give contractors three weeks to come up with numbers for us before we select.
Okay. I, I just wanted to back up for a moment, I'm sorry, I wanted to ask you about, um, the maintenance manager update.
Sure.
Sorry.
Um, yeah, Dawn, uh, is back to full being.
Okay.
Uh, he's been cleared, but, uh, we still have, uh, some lingering things, especially water system wise, if it needs to be tensioned at the temporary for you that we brought. And there's some certain things that I would prefer that someone with a little more vitality to be doing. Um, so we're restructuring, um, the, the work responsibilities. And then we will come back to the commission. That'll be a point about how we're going to address that, especially with our new budget coming up.
Yeah. Well, Brandon is doing great, so that's good.
Um, and we do have an infrastructure project starting on the fifteenth, if I was a nine, but it's now the fifteenth. Uh, it's already been approved, Kitsap Housing nine, nine, the foam, uh, extension.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, they've cleared the lots and everything else, all done up there, they're getting ready to, they'll start installing sewer first.
Okay.
And then, uh, after that, probably a week or so later, they'll begin the water portion. And that's where we will have, uh, Brandon up there doing, basically watching that over to.
Basically oversight.
Basically as the port's inspector.
Mm-hmm.
There, he has a lot of, uh, installation experience, so that and, uh, shipyard process is exactly what governments need. So we, uh, we'll be able to keep tabs and track on every bit and piece and record what we need to record so that when the time comes, we know that we'll be what, what our water system plan says we're supposed to have.
Excellent, that's great. Okay, uh, water committee? Is that, or are you talking about the, yeah, yeah, water committee?
I can touch on the water, we had a meeting on the third, um, we discussed, uh, another developer's extension that's, uh, been applied for re-extension, um, bit over on Millwright Street. Um, we came to terms on, uh, on the corrections that need to be made so that they will approve those plans. Um, but I, that has to get over to the engineer and make those corrections, I'll review those and then we'll put that final bit to the, uh, of the application and approve that application.
Is that their engineer or ours or?
It's their engineer, but their engineer is also our engineer.
Okay.
So, um, they, you know, they, they chose to use that same engineer.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, the committee's happy with it. We'll get that back and that will be a finished product for the application, which will mean that they can move on to, uh, a notice to proceed.
Right.
And that'll move along, there's, I think some easement issues that still have to be addressed there, but after that, they're good to go.
Great, excellent. Uh, here repairs?
Yeah, uh, we're still in a little bit of a holding pattern because of a lot of the water system work I've been doing, so.
Sure.
Um, uh, we haven't had any progression on the float maintenance portion or the handrail bit. Uh, we are completely done and, and finished with the, uh, repairs to the pump out stations, those are both fully operational.
Great, good, yeah.
But then, uh, I did do a, a walkthrough with marine floats and we discussed some of the issues, um, that had plagued us before in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two King Tide storms and, uh, we, we didn't find anything, you know, glaring, so, you know, with the same problems that we had are still issues that we want to address, but, uh, we're pretty confident, we're gonna satisfy, you know, survive another winter. Um, but, uh, we will be looking at, uh, having him come back when the lowest tides come up here in the fall.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna get out there on a minus three or a minus four tide, we're really gonna get in the mud and look at all of those islands. We're gonna make a list, we're gonna see what we can do with the available funds to put us in the best position.
Okay.
Whether it be encasing some of those to get to more mileage out of them or replacement if necessary. But.
Do you recall how much money we have left for that?
Yeah, it's it's stated here, four hundred and forty three thousand.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We've been fairly conservative and made sure that we used only the money we needed to 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 keep things put together. Now that observation deck, that's, that's not coming back.
That's true.
And that's gonna be an off limits portion until that whole thing gets replaced because it's a, that's a lot of money that would go into something that. Very rarely gets used anyway. We're just trying to keep that footprint so we don't lose it.
Okay, I was just gonna ask if that should even be just taken out, but you're right about the footprint. Uh, the hand railing now, you're just waiting on okaying.
So we're, we still have to finish the drawings for the sending over to. For getting the uh, and I had a volunteer helping us on it, but they've uh, had some setbacks.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
And then Oyster House, we've touched on pretty heavily already.
Do you have anything to add?
No.
Sharing that.
And then, of course, the security report had a, had an issue of a boat being left on the boat ramp. And got beached and they are no longer allowed to launch at our facility.
Okay.
A letter we drawn up and that, that is that.
Okay.
How do you use?
But going back, you still have the uh, possible action on the Oyster House.
How did I miss that? Oh, yeah.
I talked over.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and deal with that, let me find that here.
There's the action document.
So what this is uh, is um, in order to get some of the work done that we need to for moving the Oyster House and getting the engineering done. Uh, this is a request for qualifications for professional engineering services.
Right.
Would you like to address that and explain why we have?
Well, so we have to actually, you know, go out and, and find an engineer that has the qualifications to do the work that we're looking for. Once we have uh, selected a qualified engineer that's responded to all of our conditions. Then at that point, we negotiate what the cost is going to be.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean that we have to keep that engineer once we. Accept the qualifications, if we cannot come to an agreement on costs, then we can go back to the drawing board and and go back out there. But uh, usually you're, you're able to, you know, come to a, a, you know, a conclusion on what what's gonna work and what's not, so.
Yeah.
This, this will allow the port to uh, choose a engineer that has the qualifications necessary. Um, whether they're big or small.
Yeah, that is something that has changed now in order to get bids, you can't just throw out the bids, you have to get qualifications first.
And then, you know, this. This is written in a manner saying, hey, we have X amount of money to do this project. If you don't feel like we can get the construction costs and everything under that amount, don't, don't, don't come to us and tell us that you you think that that's possible. I mean, we want somebody that feels like they have a creative method that'll make that happen.
Did you look at design bill?
What was that?
If someone wants to come in and do a design build, is that possible?
Yeah, so uh, they'll, this will just be the engineering, then we go out to bid again for the actual build, so. Um, yeah, we can't do them both at the same time.
The question is, instead of design bid build, have you looked for a design build approach? I think the answer is that.
No, no, okay.
Design bid build.
Yep.
We kind of already have a design, I think that's just the problem, but we need it engineered, is that correct?
Well, we don't have the complete design of, of, of how it's gonna sit over the water. No.
Okay.
Yeah, we had thirty five percent drawings done that did not, did not.
Yeah.
Really show much of that.
Right.
Yeah.
Question.
Again.
Is that including the pilings or that including the beams and the structure?
Pilings, the whole nine yards.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. That goes back to what we discussed, if you eliminate the walkways on either side of that building, which were not part of the building.
Right.
That should save you. Fifty to sixty thousand dollars.
Right, and they've been removed with just the idea that the uh, the engineer should be mindful if it ever wants to be installed at a later point. That that in that actual.
That I think would ruin, I I don't, I don't think you'd have to do that. My reason for that is, this is a historical building, Travis. We don't have to apply for those type of items when you're putting back an historic, historical building. If it wasn't an historical building, I would agree with you, but in this case, I'd say not go to that.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Starting making an option.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, if the commission wants to remove it, easily remove it, it's. It's for, for you to talk about.
Make it easier, right?
Yeah, well, cheaper in the long run, for sure.
Yeah, and it was just uh, uh, I was asking them to, when they make the design, if, if it ever became something that was something they wanted in the future.
Yeah, would it though, because, I mean, not to waste a lot of time, but um. You know, I mean, when, when I'm dead and gone.
Okay, since we know the money that the port has that was allotted for this. Dollar value goes up every six months in this state, so I would say.
Okay.
Now, somebody fifty years from now wants to add it. The dollar value is gonna be different, that they'll have to.
Sure, yeah, okay.
And I didn't mean to add it in a way that, it was just added in a way that if the, if the design actually, it, it, in no way is it asking for it to be done.
I know, I'm just.
Yeah, and the inference is that might be, the night of the week, as it starts to say, we've never heard that.
Okay.
Cause we'll be dead and gone, so somebody can do something else, but I better not open the possibility.
And it's only one provision in here, I can completely strike that.
Okay.
It isn't incorporated to any other part of the uh, the request.
It is that in here, what page and I'd like to see.
It's a, uh, numbered, item number two, substructure and foundation design. Waterwood Foundation, item number three.
Second page, third?
Yeah, second page. Second page of the exhibit.
Okay, here we go.
Yeah. And that's second page.
And deck frame.
Okay, third part.
Four, so it's the fifth page in on the back of it.
Structure and foundation design?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's provision number III, III, number three.
Number three, okay.
Cause there was a lot that had that incorporated into the entire um. Um, write up, and I removed all of that and just incorporated it there to be sure that there, it was not going to be part of what was constructed. Just the idea when they do the actual design, that. The design would be suitable to a future expansion.
Okay, first your last line in that was construction of the graded plank, plankware not to be constructed, yeah. But still, we'll strike that whole paragraph and then we can um, approve this, so we can get it going.
Yeah, that's easy.
Is this on the website?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I make a motion to approve the uh, request for self-conditions for the professional engineering services. Regarding the cert, uh, so the, uh, Oyster House Foundation Design. With our changes that we just made, this request will be sent out. Or statewide emergency roster system for qualified responses.
I'll second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Okay, next is uh, setting the time and date for our budget workshop. There you go, I'll take that for sign. Okay. So what works for you?
For our next, our workshop, uh, sometime the week of the twenty second to the twenty sixth.
Uh, I'm not on Friday, though.
Um, no, that, that's a bad week, that's the week of small ports. I know, I'm sorry.
No, September.
Sorry. I was hoping that you could look at the last week in. September, I think it's the twenty ninth through the second of October.
I'm open on Monday or Tuesday. That's it, though.
There's just a lot to prepare for that meeting.
Okay.
I'll open, I guess, in the mornings on those two days.
Wanna shoot for Monday morning?
On the twenty ninth?
Okay, nine AM? That'll work.
December twenty ninth at nine AM.
There's the workshops.
You got it?
It's in my brain that way.
All right. Uh, so the next item, there are no new items today, so we are now at the financial position report, uh, did Aaron give the report?
Yeah, she, she put it out, I gave you, she passed it over this morning.
Okay, would you like to uh, go over that?
So uh, we're still uh, doing quite well over budget of the general fund, um. There's, the D N R revenue is starting to slack off, which we knew was coming. We'll take what we got and uh, work with that, but uh, we will not be planning any differently than we did last year in the budget for D N R revenue. Um, we usually put only around five thousand in there as some, what we think we're going to get, this was a, a very uh. Unique year for cutting in the uh, in the district. So. Bends lower down a little bit, um, so, I mean, not something to go around and say, oh gosh, we got money to spend, but. We're, we're happy to see that, and that's in the general fund, of course. Our year end balance looks to be quite a bit over what we expected, so that's uh, mostly due to that D N R revenue.
Yeah. Over budget by a hundred and twenty three thousand, correct?
Yep.
And some odd stuff, which is really helpful.
So Water Fund is another story altogether, um. We're, we're making it work, but it's, it's been challenging, um. We've got a lot more revenue coming in because we've got twenty two more service connections since the beginning of the year. Um, from the uh, M T T installation and the twelve that finally came online from uh, Housing Kita. So that's the bulk of our increased revenue on water sales. But of course, we are uh, we are definitely getting into the uh, the upper ranges of our legal expenses, so. We will be keeping a very close eye on that and seeing how it will affect our budget for next year.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner, or no?
Yep.
All righty. Okay, I guess we can move forward then with our. Uh, approval of the vouchers. So. Mike, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, I need to read these, correct?
That is correct.
All right. I make a motion that we uh, approve the uh, general fund voucher two five zero nine zero zero. One three, through two five zero nine zero zero four one. For eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty eight dollars and five cents. Also make the motion that we approve the payroll voucher, two five zero nine zero 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 one. Through two five zero nine zero zero one two. And for twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty three dollars and eight cents. And we uh, make payment for the Water Fund voucher, two five zero nine zero zero four two. Through two five zero nine zero zero four eight, for eleven thousand four hundred and twenty six dollars and seventy six cents.
Okay, I will second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So move. Okay, now we're at that fun part, good of the order. Bonnie?
Um, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see any current financial reports or anything.
In the.
Um, they're online, but you can have mine. Yeah, you can have mine. Do you have mine?
I think in the future it would be good.
Good point, though. Good point, duly noted, for sure.
I tried to download it on my phone and I can't get it.
Oh, okay. Making sure I have it all here for you. So here's these and also the executive directors report. I'll get it, I'll get it to you, are you getting it? Oh, here. She needs a blanket.
Sounds in your shimmer.
Here go, there's.
I didn't introduce you to my daughter.
Anything for the good of the order while we're signing? Oh, Ken, sorry, I missed you.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Commissioner, I just wanted to say the, the audio is much better at this meeting. You folks aren't. You're not talking over each other, I can hear a lot better, um, and I can actually see who's talking. Uh, you have a camera looking at the podium, can't see the people talking that are in the audience, but it's much better uh. Audio this time, thank you.
Thank you, great, thank you, yeah.
Well, that gives it the order.
Yes.
Joe Seater then made a couple comments and I am disdaring that, so. I was the one that took care of those things at the time, and the business part we were talking about was over in. In uh, Fairfair, and we already got the land and we needed to be get the grants that we needed to be able to do it, so that was.
Thank you.
Oh. The reason the port, the connoisseur thing is because of tourism. Making money for your families and that's gonna be good.
There's the signature pages.
I have good, I'm good with the order.
Okay.
Requires us to. I would like to put this for us, just for us to look at on the back wall. So that we can remember why we're here and who is representing.
Okay.
Need, move along, yes.
Oh, we have our quorum, don't we? Go ahead and move that we can put it on the.
I make a motion that we put in uh, the sign and guide we trust. On the back walls for us.
Us to remind ourselves.
For us to remind ourselves if we will be for it.
I will second that, all in favor? Oh, that, you know what, that was uh, for the good of the order, so we weren't really supposed to vote on that, but. Now we'll be in trouble.
Yeah, I like your request, it's because I am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Duly noted.
I, I knew there was a chance it was gonna be a note, so.
Wasn't the public requested, it wasn't the government request. Public gas.
It will be out there by.
Okay, okay, cause we're here to serve, you know, but. Never forget that. Never forget that. Anything else for the good of the order? Will, do you have anything you want to share? No? Mister LePere, nothing for the order? No?
I promise I wasn't gonna say anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, everybody. If there, if that's it, I don't have anything else. Um.
Maybe turn that to me.
Next meeting will be our workshop, which will be the twenty-ninth. But then our, a regular meeting will be October. Is it eleventh?
You know, I put that on here and now it's like, I'm like.
October thirteenth, four PM.
Everybody watched me put it on my phone, I'm looking down my phone.
Special meeting will be nine AM on the twenty-ninth, Monday. I know, I agree, but that's what everybody usually can make, the commissioners. Okay, nothing else and meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.
I'll give them. Yeah. That's the normal way to do it, yeah.
Uh, Ken?
Oh, Ken, I'm sorry. Are you done, Ken?
Apparently, he's done.
Oh.
No, uh, Mister Seeler was trying to get your attention.
Meeting's adjourned, Ken.
Sorry.
Apparently, I was trying to get attention.
Well, is he still there? I can go ahead and.
To, they were turned off the TV now.
Huh?
Don't worry, I didn't see him. Have you seen?